This is a lot.
Yes. This is a problem. I started this many years ago. I have a very hard job, but they don't allow. You know how I have to do that? They'll turn it on.
Which is virtual.
And then they don't allow.
I wonder if some kind of reason, because remember we did own that stuff on like powell.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
I can ask Mark.
I wonder if they consider it a mistake.
I can ask.
They can't do it. Yeah, that's why I have to tell them. No, no, but they. So I did them a whole set of children. Yeah. And they, and they would have a heart that come around in that whole set. A lot of times they want to. In a whole set.
Well.
It says everything.
The P or the P I P T.
I think your driveway.
Yeah.
We just had a word with the city.
Yeah.
It might be for the set or there might be like a. Or there might be like a paving notch somewhere where it becomes like private property, like a powell. And I doubt there is, but I've never seen one. But I'm gonna just ask Mark.
How would you hold it?
Good.
Good, good.
Did you hear or did you go?
Uh, maybe we're just gonna have from now.
She doesn't know.
Voice, uh, family, size of family.
Family's beautiful, really.
We usually do a thing at, uh, one of the sisters.
And Sean was on the chair.
We are going to, uh, for Maryland for a cousin. So he's taking these things for everybody to come together. So let's get, let's get a pool. Get together with people you haven't seen before.
Never bought. Do you, is your bag made of log?
Me is what the holidays look like. So decompress.
Oh, God. But it's the same amount of what I paid. Yeah, yeah. And I have my S T. Okay.
No.
Depending on the time, just for me. On the way to, uh, Singapore, you know, Hong Kong. At the last time I think it's, uh, one of the top, there's a, a sorrow. That scare back.
We're gonna go ahead and get started here. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming out in this weather. Welcome to the January sixth, twenty twenty five West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors organizational meeting. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise.
What's the allegiance to apply in the United States of America? As a universal public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is the Chair's announcement that this meeting may be audio and video recorded by third parties. And we're also live streaming on our YouTube channel. And there are extra copies of the agenda in the back of the room if anybody needs a copy. So tonight, since this is the organizational meeting, we're going to have our Vice Chair Tina Marie Smith open the floor for nominations for Chair for the year twenty twenty five.
We have to amend the agenda.
First. Go ahead.
My recommendation will be to do that when we get to Agenda Item Number Five on the agenda after the, after the election of the Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, based on that, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And we'll call for motion and a vote on that. Is there any discussion on that as to who we call for the Chair for twenty twenty five?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Sean Walsh for Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Any public comments relative to that? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. Congratulations, Sean, for another year.
Thank you.
And Charles two more.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Ashley, for being Chair last year. It was good job. Um, so next action, the next item on the agenda is for me to, uh, request nominations for Vice Chair. So is there a board member, uh, who would like to nominate someone to be Vice Chair of the Board for twenty twenty five?
I'll nominate Mr. Hellman.
Thank you, Nate. Through a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ashley. Any comment or discussion from anyone? Very good. We'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition?
I'll just include myself in that.
Well, I, I did that last time. I was told I can vote for yourself, Johnson. It's up to you. All right, so that was four zero. Four votes in favor with Mr. Hellman abstaining. Very good. So with that out of the way, uh, the next agenda item is number four, which is public comment. Is there anyone in attendance who has an issue or a comment to raise about something that is not on the agenda tonight? Very good. We'll move on then to item number five. Uh, this is where we need to amend the agenda, I believe, because we have inadvertently missed off the list of Township Staff Appointments. Our zoning officer, Shelby Smith.
Nothing personal.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda, item number five, to include the zoning officer, uh, with Shelby Smith.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any public comment or questions? All right, good. We'll take a vote to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. Very good. So I will read out the, uh, the proposed Township and Staff Appointments, and then we'll take a vote on those positions. So Township Manager, Township Secretary and Open Records Officer, Chris Bayshaw. Deputy Open Records Officer, Jennifer Polon, Polonoli. Finance Director, Treasurer, Christine Riffey. Assistant Finance Director, Human Resources Director, Jennifer Latzer. Deputy Tax Collector, Kimberly Green. Park and Recreation Director, Ken Lear. Chief of Police, Michael Carroll. Township Engineer, Deputy Zoning Officer, Brian Kalikowski. Street Superintendent, Mark Botolami. Park Superintendent, Doreen McLune. Waste Water Superintendent, Michael Moffler. Director of Code Enforcement, Fire Marshal. Emergency Management Coordinator, Andrea Testa. Building Code Official, Deputy Zoning Officer, John Bezwick. Assistant Fire Marshal, Building Code Official, Mike McCarthy. Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, Lisa Gavada. Part-time Special Project Engineer, Richard Crave. And Zoning Officer, Shelby Smith. So I'll make the motion to, uh, approve those appointments. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Any public comment or questions on the motion? Again, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. Congratulations, everyone, on another year in your role, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is to confirm our professional, uh, consultant appointments for twenty twenty five. Um, so we have Township Solicitors, Buckley, Brian, Maguire, and Morris. Labor Council, Eckert, Seemus, Chairman, and Malott. Consulting Engineer, Carol Engineering. Traffic Engineer, McCormick Taylor. Special Traffic Engineer for a project at nine twenty-nine South High Street. We have an engagement with Bova and Consulting Group that will continue. Our outside auditor is Witham, Smith, and Brown. They were formerly BBD Inc., and we have a contract with them. Rental Property Inspector, Assistant Fire Inspector, is Code Inspections, Inc. And H R Consultant, Roseanne McGrath, Consulting. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion to approve those consultant appointments for twenty twenty five?
I'll include her.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any questions from anyone?
I just have a question. We have a, uh, contract with Gilmore Associates who is doing consulting with the Township. We're doing a two, the zoning ordinance rewrite. Do we need to, uh, point them in that book?
I don't believe so, because that's a special contract individualized for that project.
Same at all.
Correct.
Is there any reason why Bova was on this list then? Because I always thought they were similar.
They're kind of, since they're a traffic engineer and they're a professional consultant related to that, I just wanted, I just included them.
Okay. Doesn't matter, I guess. All right, so, and any other questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approval of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Uh, Agenda Item Number Seven. These are proposed appointments for the specific terms in office directors, boards, and commissions of the Township. I'll read them out, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve them, uh, altogether. So the Planning Commission, we have Carrie Martin for a four-year term as a member. Corey Weckerbauer, four-year term as a member. John Hellman is the Board Liaison, proposed. Park and Recreation Board is Ashley Garnier as the Board Liaison. Historic Commission is Kathy Massey for a three-year term as a member. Stephen Lyons for a three-year term as a member. Dr. Doug White, a three-year term as a member. And Nate Wallman is our Board Liaison. The Sewer Authority is myself as a Board Liaison. The Vacancy Board would be Ashley Garnier, one-year term, member. John Hellman, one-year term, member. Tina Marie Smith, one-year term as a member. Myself, one-year term, member. Nate Wallman, one-year term, member. And Elena Gregorio is a one-year term as a member. The Pension Committee is Angelo Savaloni for a one-year term as a member. David Brune is a one-year term as a member. Charles Creighton, one-year term as a member. Bob Holland, one-year term as a member. Hugh Pennell, one-year term as a member. Walker Tomkins, a one-year term as an alternate member. And myself is the Board Liaison. Sustainability Advisory Committee is Henry Alexander for a two-year term as a member. Susan Charks, two-year term as a member. Melanie Vile, two-year term as a member. And Ashley and Tina Marie Smith are our Board Liaisons to that committee. Administration, I have myself as Board Liaison for the police. John Hellman and Tina Marie Smith as Board Liaisons. And for public words, it's John and Nate as Board Liaisons. I'm gonna stop there, and, uh, we'll take a motion on those specific appointments. Is there a board member wishing to make a motion to approve those appointments?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you, John. Is there any comments or questions from anyone? Very good. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any, any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is a consideration of appointment to the West Goshen Sewer Authority. Give me a minute, I just need to turn to that. So before the Board is consideration to appoint Scott Cullenan, uh, P E, to the West Goshen Township Sewer Authority. Tina Marie has previously served on this Board and has decided not to continue, um, the expiration of a term at the end of the year. And that created a vacancy. Mr. Cullenan previously was our zoning hearing, served on our zoning hearing Board until his own resignation from that Board at the end of this year. Uh, if appointed, Mr. Cullenan would be appointed to a five-year term, which would expire on January the first, twenty thirty. Does the Board have any questions about Mr. Cullen's, uh, potential appointment to the, the West Goshen Sewer Authority? Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Cullen to the Board. Is there a second? Thank you, Tina. Any public comment? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is consideration of appointment to the Park and Recreation Board. So before the Board is consideration to appoint Mr. Tim McNally as a regular member of the Park and Recreation Board. Mr. McNally currently serves as an alternate member on the Board. If appointed, he would complete the term of Eunice Alexander, who decided to resign at the end of twenty twenty four. And his term would run until January the first, twenty twenty eight. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. McNally to the Park and Recreation Board as a regular member?
I'll lift it.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Does that mean that there's an alternate position?
There will be an alternative.
Chris, you'll be putting that in the newsletter.
We will, we will advertise that in the January newsletter.
Okay. Great. Is there any public comment on the motion? Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is a Board of, Board Representative to the Westchester Area Council of Governments. Is there any board member what, wishing to volunteer to be, are represented to the CAG?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you, Tina. You're, you're, can they all represent?
They can, they can represent.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, take these individually, so I'll make the motion to, to approve Tina's, uh, representative, representative to the Westchester Area CAGs. Through a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association Board. So just a bit of background on this. Nate, myself, currently two board members on this management association. We have one meeting a year, basically. It was held in December, where we review the, uh, assessment that is made for the lots in, in woodlands relative to the, the improvements that have been made. And, uh, the fees that are due every year for that. They informed us this year that whoever is on this Board needs to register with a federal agency. For some reason, I forget the actual reason, but it was, it's just a requirement. It's basically an identification to ensure that, you know, there's a clear understanding of who people, that who is on this particular association board, so. I'm quite happy to continue. I don't know about you, Nate. It's.
I already read the story for you.
Okay. I waited.
Well, I'll make the motion to report, Nate, Sean, for that position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any public comment? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. And finally, on this list of appointments is the Voting Delegate to the Twenty Twenty Five P Sats Conference. Is there anyone, any board member wishing to volunteer to be our voting delegate? Thank you, Nate. I, I will, uh, make the motion to, uh, have Nate be our voting delegate to the Twenty Twenty Five P Sats Conference. Is there a second? Thank you, Ashley. Is there any public comment or questions? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is Agenda Item Number Eight. So I'll make a motion to approve the following financial depositories for twenty twenty five. TD Bank, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trusts, known as P L G I T, and Santander Bank. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ashley. Any public comment or questions on the motion? Very good. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Nine is the, uh, requirement to recommend to the Board of Auditors that the Township's Finance Director and the Township Manager have bonds set as follows for twenty twenty five. Township Manager, one million dollars. Township Finance Director, seven point five million dollars. I'll make the motion to recommend to the Board of Auditors those amounts.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. Is there any public comment or questions?
Just a quick question. Uh, what determines those amounts? Is that set by township code or?
It's just based on cash available and the Township's financial policies. And all of our, all of our accounts require, we require dual authentication.
We did ask our, our external auditors to review this amount. They had no specific recommendation to change it. He said it does vary depending on townships, for township size and some of the balances we have. They felt this was appropriate. Any other questions? Very good. Then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Ten, I will announce the Board of Supervisors meetings for twenty twenty five. Board meetings, Board Public Meetings are scheduled for the first and third Tuesday of each month at six P M. Except as noted today, January the sixth, twenty twenty five. The meeting started at five P M. and is focused on the organizational meeting, as, as, um, you're all aware. On May the first, twenty twenty five, at six P M. Instead of, uh, there's been rescheduled from May sixth, twenty twenty five. Um, May twenty first, twenty five, twenty twenty five, at six P M., which is rescheduled from May the twentieth. And then November the sixth, twenty twenty five, at six P M. Again, that was rescheduled from November the fourth. So there's three meetings that have been rescheduled. Otherwise, it is the first and third Tuesday of each month.
Mr. Chairman, I will note that the Township's meeting schedule is published in the daily local news on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, as approved by the Board on December, uh, third, twenty twenty four, and the dates have been posted on the Township website.
Okay, so it's just an announcement. We've already approved the advertisement and notification of this, so.
That is.
No motion tonight.
No motion, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, I'm also gonna announce the, Agenda Item Number Eleven, the twenty twenty five Township Holiday Schedule. On which dates the office will be closed. Monday, January the first, which is in the past, New Year's Day. Monday, January the twentieth, Martin Luther King Day. Monday, February the seventeenth, President's Day. Monday, May twenty-sixth, Memorial Day. Thursday, June nineteenth, Juneteenth Day. Friday, July fourth, Independence Day. Monday, September first, Labor Day. Monday, October thirteenth, Columbus Day. Tuesday, November the eleventh, Veterans Day. Thursday, November the twenty-seventh, Thanksgiving. Friday, November twenty-eighth, day after Thanksgiving. And Thursday, November twenty-fifth, Christmas Day.
Thursday, December is in November.
I meant December. Got, got ahead of myself there.
I'll make that motion.
We're just announcing Tina's not a motion, yeah. Okay, so we're on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is possible adoption of Resolution Number One, twenty twenty five, regarding fire, ambulance, and police response territories. So, let me turn to that one. Chris, you, you wanna just introduce this? I mean, I, obviously, it's, it looks like it's gonna remain the same, but we could, if you just introduce it for the Board.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before the Board this evening is proposed Resolution Number One dash twenty twenty five. This is the annual resolution establishing the response territories for police, fire, and emergency medical services. Uh, the service providers outlined in the proposed resolution are followed, follows, uh, police, West Goshen Township Police Department, fire, Westchester Fire Department, and Goshen Fire Company. Basic life support, Goshen Fire Company, and Good Fellowship Ambulance Company. And advanced life support, Good Fellowship Ambulance Company. Coverage, the coverage territories are identical to those approved in twenty twenty four.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number One, twenty twenty five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Do we have to change the, um, titles on this before it gets finalized or signed? I mean, uh, Board of Supervisors, West Goshen Township titles. We all say that.
We've never, we have not done that in the past.
Okay.
In, in the past, for the first revolute, resolutions for the organizational meeting, since the Board hasn't organized, I just list that reefer as a member. And there's never been an issue.
Okay, good question, Tina. Thank you. Is there any other, is there any public comment or questions on the, um, on Resolution One, twenty twenty five, the police, fire, and ambulance coverage? Okay, well, we have a motion, so let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is Agenda Item Number Thirteen, which is possible adoption of Resolution Number Two, twenty twenty five, adopting the emergency operations plan for West Goshen Township. Chris, could you introduce this one again?
Hi, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so before the Board this evening is proposed Resolution Number Two dash twenty twenty five. This is the annual resolution adopting the Township's emergency operations plan. Uh, please be advised that in speaking with the Township's Emergency Management Coordinator, Andrea Testa. Chester County is actively working on an appendix to all emergency operations plans pertaining to pipelines. This is something they've been working on for quite some time. And once it's available, it'll be incorporated into the Township's plan. As such, the Board may need to consider an update to this resolution when that is finalized.
We haven't talked for a month, and it's one of the things that's been three years.
I do not. It is in the hands of the county and the consultant that they've hired.
Can you, uh, they're supposed to be consulting with all the townships that are being affected by the pipeline. Do you know if they're consulting with West Goshen Township?
I believe Andrea has met with them, and there have been a couple exercises that, that have been attended by representatives of the Township.
Any other questions? So, uh, we just need, yeah, looking for a board member to make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Resolution Number Two. So, okay. And of course, it'd be, is Tina and John?
John seconded.
Okay.
All right, so I'll give Tina and John.
All right. Is there any questions on the motion? Very good. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Uh, Agenda Item Number Fourteen is possible adoption of Resolution Number Three, twenty twenty five, that sets the Township Manager's salary for twenty twenty five. So before the Board this evening is proposed Resolution Number Three, twenty twenty five. This is the annual resolution establishing the salary for the Township Manager pursuant to section seven dash five of the Township's Code of Ordinances. The amount reflected has been allocated in the twenty twenty five budget adopted by the Board on December the seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Are any questions on the resolution?
I'll make the resolution.
You make the motion to approve the Resolution Number Three?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nate. John, thank you, Nate. Any public comments or questions?
Did you wanna read the email?
Yeah. Okay, take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Next is Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which is possible adoption of Resolution Number Four, twenty twenty five, establishing compensation for members of the Planning Commission Zoning Hearing Board of the West Goshen Township Sewer Authority. So before the Board this evening is proposed Resolution Number Four, twenty twenty five. The resolution will establish the pay rates for members of the Planning Commission Zoning Hearing Board in the West Goshen Township Sewer Authority. The Township is authorized to compensate members of these bodies through the P A Municipalities, Planning Code, and the Municipal Authorities Act. Pursuant to these laws, as well as sections twelve dash two of the Planning Commission, and eighty-four dash seventy-one dot B three pertaining to the zoning hearing board, the compensation rate should be set by a resolution. This proposed resolution would set the following compensation rates for twenty twenty five. Planning Commission, forty dollars per meeting attended. Zoning Hearing Board, forty dollars per meeting attended. West Goshen Township Sewer Authority, forty dollars per meeting intended, attended. These amounts are unchanged, and the pay is issued quarterly. For alternative, alternate members of the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, they only receive compensation if they are designated as a vote, voting alternate member of their respective body for that meeting. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Four, twenty twenty five. Through a second.
I'll second that. Um, question, do we need to indicate that the pro meeting attended also includes Zoom? Zoom attendance? Or does that only clarify?
They're all, they're all meetings, as long as they're advertised as a public meeting. It doesn't matter if it's virtual or in person.
I mean, person. Everybody's attending, but one person is Zooming.
As long as they're attending, they would, they would get compensated for it.
So we don't have to clarify with how.
I don't believe so.
Uh, if they're attending virtually, they have to be able to hear everything, and we have to hear them, and they have to be able to vote, so.
And do we have to vote on the auditors, uh, please?
Not the, the auditor for the, um, for the outside auditor?
No, the inside auditor. For the Township.
The Board of Auditors?
Yeah.
I believe that's set by the second-class Township Code. Thank you. But I, but I can check in if necessary, we can come back before the Board.
Enter certification and for the record, these three commissioned board of authorities are authorized, uh, by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code and Municipal Authorities Act. Do these codes and acts allow us to compensate members of any other committees or, uh, commissions within the township besides those three?
Each, each body of the Township is set forward by its own enabling legislation adopted by the state. And as far as I'm aware, only those three authorize compensation. Park and Recreation Board is without compensation. Same thing with the S A C and the Historic Commission.
It's not like we're discriminating against.
Correct.
Particular boards or commissions. So this is what we're allowed to do by law.
That is, that is my understanding.
Okay, any other questions on, uh, this resolution? Number Four? Any public comment or questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. Agenda Item Number Sixteen is discussion on possible approval. Agenda item number sixteen is discussion and possible approval or revision to West Goshen Township's general fee schedule. Chris, do you want to introduce this one, please?
I guess, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is an update to the township's general fee schedule. I also, I would like to thank Ken, Shelby, Brian, and Andrea, and the members of our COGS team for working on this update to the fee schedule. So there are three changes to the fee schedule that's before the board this evening. And I'm going to defer the park and recreation fee changes to Ken, so that he can discuss those further. The first is a waste and recycling fee adjustment that was discussed during preparation of the twenty twenty five budget. This will go from ninety-five dollars per quarter to a hundred and ten dollars per quarter, as discussed during the budget preparation, and will be effective with the bills issued on April first, twenty twenty five. And the other item related to the codes department fees is only one change, which would be the fee associated with the renewal of expired permits. This was previously only in the residential building permits section, but has been added to the sections for commercial building permits, zoning permits, and grading drainage and erosion permits. And this is because permits issued under the Building Code expire after a hundred and eighty days of no activity. Ken, would you like to discuss the changes to the park and recreation fee structure?
And I don't know if you have a fee structure in front of you or not, but the Park and Recreation Board informed a committee this summer to look at the fees. And they made a recommendation to the Park and Recreation Board with feedback from John, Susan, and me as well. And the Park and Recreation Board unanimously recommended the following fee structure. For picnics under one hundred people, one hundred dollars for weekends and evenings if the person is a resident. Fifty dollars on weekdays before two thirty if the person is a non-resident, uh, is a, a resident on weekdays, I'm sorry. For people who are non-residents, under one hundred people, is two hundred dollars on weekends and evenings, one hundred dollars on weekdays before two thirty. Then we get to flat fees for resident or non-resident, one hundred to two hundred and fifty people. Three hundred dollars for weekdays and evenings, one hundred and fifty dollars on weekdays before two thirty. And over two hundred and fifty people, four hundred dollars for weekdays and evenings, two hundred dollars on weekdays before two thirty. We would continue to waive fees for government entities, that would be our own use, Westchester Area School District, or Chester County.
Ken, on the, either application for the parks, if they're going to rent them, is there any mention that the additional cost would be for police that are going to be, if a police presence is required, may be required, and the full expense of it will be charged to the person renting?
Yeah, the, the police staffing was addressed this summer with chapter fifty-seven being amended. For over three hundred people, we can include a statement on it. Now, we are planning this year to move the bulk of picnic registrations online, so that would be very easy to.
Yeah, I think we should include the full cost of the township, it's going to, you know, it might be charged for. So it's three hundred dollars for more than two hundred?
It's a, it's a, it's a set hourly rate for the police, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head. But it's a, it's any, any event that has three hundred or more people.
And that is categorized and charged separately by the police department if it's separate.
Right, which is okay, just as long as they see the total cause and don't get, you know, upset that they're charging another three hundred dollars they weren't aware of, whatever the cost is.
The cost would only be an estimate because it's built on an hourly basis, so if something goes over or is under, they'll be charged accordingly. So let's say, so if it's like a hundred, a hundred dol- a hundred dollars an hour,
Right.
and they put in that the event's going to be four hours, but ends up being five, they're charged five hundred dollars for police.
That's okay, as long as you put a unit cost in there, and then they can figure it out what it is from there. I would just put the unit cost, not the total, yeah. Okay, I would prefer that it be in there if possible, thank you.
Ken, do we have, do you have comparatives with surrounding municipalities or similar sized parks and events?
We did, prior to this, we did a study, a poll of municipalities throughout Southeastern Pennsylvania. So these are, I, I will be honest, the fees that we were using were on the higher end when we instituted them about fifteen years ago. This puts us not quite in the higher end, but above the median, I'd say, of fees.
Because this is the first time in fifteen years we've adjusted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ken, or any of the other adjustments to the general fee schedules?
I just have a question, what's considered to be a picnic? Some neighbors get together, just fry a couple hot dogs and hamburgers when we grill, you know, get together, you know, Friday afternoon, or whatever, I mean, it's just a really a top-two kind of deal. I mean, are we talking about, you have to apply for a permit and pay a fee and all this stuff?
By township board gives, any group of twenty-five or more, a permit is required. So a smaller group may show up and, and use the park, and there's
Without any repercussions?
Now, of course, groups that have a permit will get priority usage. So if a herd that shows up there, if there's a permit issue, oh, well, they're out of luck.
So what are the benefits for getting a permit?
So, so some smaller groups do opt to get picnics, just to make sure it is aside from their group. But that's optional for.
So if you apply for a permit and get that and pay the fee, you have exclusive use of the
You have exclusive use of the facility. Bathrooms are still open to the public, and the rest of the parks are still open to the public, but you have exclusive use of the facility.
Any other questions for Ken and Chris on these general fee changes? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the updated general fee schedule, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ashley. Any final chance for public comment or questions? Very good, we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. Without, we move on to agenda item number seventeen. Discussion on possible approval of resolution number five, twenty twenty four, granting preliminary subdivision and land development approval for the proposed subdivision of an existing three-acre vacant parcel into two lots located at five thirteen Susan Drive. So thank you for patiently waiting while we get through this, but it was, you know, Brian, you lead on this one?
Yes. Good evening, in front of you tonight is five thirteen Susan Drive, it is an existing vacant parcel. Here's the existing property map, Susan Drive is on the right-hand side of the plan. Parcel is currently vacant. The existing house was taken down a couple of years ago. The proposed project is to subdivide Susan's down the bottom into a lot in the front and a rear flylot. This is a preliminary application, if you look at the aerial. This three-acre parcel right here is the property, one house will be in the rear, one house will be in the, in the front corner. They are currently going through their, so they have mental requirements for the preliminary plan. They have to come back to file with the additional details and their sewage designers, they currently, they have not submitted yet.
Is there's a public sewer on Susan Drive?
There is public sewer, but they may have the pump to get to it, I'm not sure. That's, that's the details of how they're getting to Susan Drive isn't been worked out yet. Landscaping plan has to be submitted as part of the final as well. That's one of the items in the resolution, is a waiver of providing landscaping and preliminary providing and filing.
Okay, and not, there's, there's going to be no way there's going to be a septic system on these lots?
I'm Jim Fritsch from Regester Associates, we're the site engineer for the project. George Palomba is from Five Thirteen Susan L L C, which is the owner. Who proposed to use public sewer and public water. No, we do not envision a one-site septic on either lot. Paperwork has been forwarded up to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for approval of the tie-in to the public sewer, so, no.
Okay.
If they, if they were to go on a lot, they have to revise five thirty-seven, which is going to be a much longer process.
Okay.
Now, you're asking for a waiver, which requires the plan to identify the existing sewer lines, water lines, and so on and so forth, transmission lines. So, but that's just for this preliminary plan, correct? You will provide any information on the final land development plan?
We will show the sewer line, as well as the water line, and the exact tie-ins and the method of tie-ins. Those waivers are mainly to not show all that information three hundred feet from all portions of the three-acre parcel. So all the pertinent information will be shown on the final plans. But we're asking for the waiver not to show it three hundred feet away.
So with it, this application went before the planning commission, was there particular issues or concerns raised there about any of these waivers or other issues?
No, the planning commission recommended preliminary plan approval with the three requested waivers conditional upon the township engineer's review letter dated December fifth, twenty twenty four.
And Brian, you're comfortable with this, these waivers and the, the decision that's on this resolution before the board?
Yeah.
Thank you. The board have any other questions or comments?
I guess my question basically is, why do you need the waivers? Why can't they be submitted prior? What would prevent you from complying?
We can comply with the three hundred-foot requirement if the board sees fit. The township engineer, from a technical standpoint, has no objection to the waivers for a small subdivision in, in, in an existing subdivision. I don't think from any engineer's standpoint is necessary, that's why we asked for the waiver.
Okay.
So I'm just looking at the verbiage of the waivers, the list of all the sewer lines and so forth, and it says "and" within three hundred feet of the boundaries of the proposed development. So that would, I would take that to mean that you would not be required to identify any of that stuff, even within the, the plot itself?
The way I read it is, we have to per ordinance show all that information three hundred feet within any portion of the property, which is pretty extensive when you're in a subdivision and you have a three-acre lot.
John, I can tell you that the information in the waiver has been shown on the plan within the boundaries of the property and along the property front edge, they're talking, it's three hundred feet around the property, we have to go, that's what the
I'm just looking at the verbiage here.
Yeah, the verbiage is because of how the ordinance section is written.
Okay, but it will include all that information within the
It's already been provided.
Okay, I think it's the word "and" that throws you off.
Yeah, but that's how, that's the way the ordinance is written, that's the way it's written, because of the way that, the, the way the requirements written, the words is how it has to be written by
Does this mean also exempt any trees that would be taken down above a four-inch calipso?
No, that's all shown on the plans and is already here.
All right.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, then I will make a motion to approve resolution number five, twenty twenty five, granting this preliminary subdivision land development for five thirteen Susan Drive, is there a second?
Second.
Nate, thank you. Is there any public comment or questions about this proposed application, this proposed resolution? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero.
Thank you, thank you very much for your time tonight, and wish you all a happy
A love with the project, we'll see you again, I guess.
Yes, we'll be back with the final for you. And most of the information's already on the plans for final, so we should be back in relatively near future.
Very good. Next on the agenda is item number eighteen, which is discussion and possible approval of resolution number six, twenty twenty five, granting final subdivision land development approval to combine twenty thousand square foot with an existing parcel at eleven ninety Phoenixville Pike. This is a Christ Community Church owned parcel. It's just like a consolidation of two lots, right, and the same
It's a subdivision, so this is a, this is proposed subdivision as well.
Okay.
This is the Christ Community Church on Phoenixville Pike. They own a one-acre parcel next to them. There's a house that fronts Phoenixville Pike. They're proposing to subdivide off about twenty thousand square feet of the rear and combine it with their lot.
They own the parcel that the house is on?
Yes.
Is that house to remain?
The house is to remain, there's no
So you buy the back of the house property?
Yes.
Two sections?
The house itself is, will remain. Here's the house. There's, here's the proposed property line. And then this portion of the lot will be combined with the lot, church. No construction proposed, it's just a financial subdivision.
So this would allow the church, if they wanted to, to sell the property, but it's just a house or whatever?
Yes.
Have to sell the whole entire?
Correct, they're making the, the subdivision creates the property for the house to be minimum size and meet ultimate requirements.
Okay, so it's conforming with the zoning for the housing in that area? There's no, this, this lot, when it gets combined, will no longer be zone residential, or what? What happens to the zoning of this new parcel as it gets combined?
It, it maintains, it's, it's under the lines of, so whatever the current zoning district is, it will maintain that. And I don't believe, I can bring it up, like, do not believe
So there's no, you can start zoning boundary there, it's just, the church is, is allowed within the, whatever residential zoning district that is?
Is it in R district?
R two, I thought.
That lot is, it's in N three.
Is that right here?
Yeah.
So it's all the same district, the district is not changing. This is the, this is the parcel, and this is the, the one-acre parcel, they're going to find this is the church parcel.
So what is the zoning, is it R two or?
R three.
R two.
R three.
R three?
R three.
R three.
Okay. So there's no change to the
Yes, it's all R three.
And this is, has this been in front of the planning commission?
Yes, it was in the planning commission in December.
Were there any issues raised by the planning commission?
Nope.
Are there any waivers being asked for? You said everything's conforming to the, the lot sizes, right?
Yeah, the only waiver will be processed at its preliminary final.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve this resolution.
Thank you, John, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, is there any public comment or questions about this resolution? Thank you for the board, we're good. All right, then we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. All right, next is agenda item number nineteen, which is approval of the board supervisors' meeting minutes from December the third, twenty twenty four. Have, have the board members had a chance to review the minutes, and do you have any corrections of substance to report tonight? If there are typos or words misspelled, we can always email Chris those. Looking for anyone who feels the record misstates or is inaccurate with respect to its, its content. Are there any corrections from any board members?
I just have one, it's a minor one, it's on page three, paragraph seven, from the top. I just insert the word "they" there, Mr. Cobb stated that "they" work with the Westchester University.
Thank you, John. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes on December the third?
So may.
Thank you, John, is there a second? Thank you, Nate. Any public comments or questions about the motion or the meeting minutes? Hearing now, we're ready to take a vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now the motion passes five zero. And with that, we're to agenda item number twenty, which is motion to adjourn, I will make the motion, is there a second? Thank you, Ashley, all in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, safe journey home.